...the board of education meeting for Monday, September 11 at 6:05. Everybody please stand.
The allegiance is applied to United States of America and to the father of which stands a nation of God and to all the religions and houses of God.
Charlotte Gerber.
Here.
Michelle Reiser here.
Dave Fliffer.
Here.
Mike Ransford.
Here.
Adam Knecht, your name or body.
Here.
And our job.
Here.
Thank you.
And the exits are behind you to your right and left, and then behind us to our right. And then, subject 2.1, may I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 7 to 0. Subject 3.1. May I please get a motion to accept the minutes of the Board of Education Business Meeting held on August 14, 2023? Patty, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 7 to 0. Subject 3.2. May I please get a motion to approve the special business meeting minutes of September 1, 2023? Dave, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 7 to 0. Subject 4.1, reports and presentations. Hand it over to Sarah.
Good evening. Earlier today, Greenwood Lake Schools, Dark Falls Schools had their Patriot Day ceremony. Most ceremonies did have to move inside this morning, but it was still a very important event for us to make sure that it was still held, held despite the weather. Students dressed up in their red, white, and blue. We had a huge turnout from the Greenwood Lake Police, Greenwood Lake Fire Department, Warwick Police, and the Greenwood Lake Ambulance Corps. In addition, at the elementary school, we had several veterans attend as well. So it was a good event and important that we continue to honor and remember the victims and the heroes of 9/11 on a yearly basis. This weekend, the Greenwood Lake teachers and staff were very busy in the College of Greenwood Lake. On Saturday, they participated in the bed races with Kiss the Summer Goodbye theme. And then on Sunday, we had several staff members participate in the Do It for Dale 5K. For principal reports this evening, Mrs. Connolly is off for some personal time this week, and so she asked me to present her principal's report on her behalf. Good evening, Board of Education members. This morning, elementary students and staff were honored to host our annual ceremony to show our appreciation to our first responders, retired military, and community volunteers. I'd like to express my personal thanks to our local police, fire, and ambulance corps, local veterans for participating, and our scout leaders who came in to help lead students in the pledge of allegiance. We are extremely grateful to these men and women and the examples of civic responsibility that they provide every day through their service and actions. After a very busy summer that included skills classes for grades 1 through 3, bridging and kickoff programs for incoming pre-K and kindergarteners, summer curriculum work by our staff, the hiring of pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade teaching staff and teaching assistant positions, and the completion of our door replacement project, I'm pleased to report that we've had a great opening to the school year. Our biggest news is the welcoming of our first pre-K students to the elementary school, and I'm happy to report that these students, along with their team of teachers, have made a very smooth transition to our full-day program and are enjoying all the benefits of our rich curriculum and age-appropriate center activities. As recommended by local law enforcement and safety specialists, we have reduced our points of entrance for arrival to two doors only and have successfully implemented our new parent driver drop-off arrival procedures. On the horizon, we have the following upcoming elementary school events to look forward to. On Tuesday, September 19, we'll open our doors for all elementary parents and guardians for back-to-school night. And then the first PTSA meeting of the year will be that same evening at 7:30. On Friday, September 29, the elementary school will host Grandparents' Day. On this day, grandparents and other senior citizen relatives come for a special visit, during which we honor and recognize the contribution to the lives of grandchildren. And lastly, more fun and excitement is coming as soon as next week. Mrs. Connolly will be meeting with the club and facilitators to finalize session dates so registration packets can go out to all families. This year, the elementary school will offer nine clubs plus a drama production for grades 2, 3 students. Clubs will include art sewing, Techno Kids, Happy Feet, Pause to Read, Intermials Lego, and our Greenwood Lake Culinary Institute. And that's the news from the elementary school. Mrs. Connolly would like to thank board members and the district administrative team for the guidance and support of elementary programs and initiatives both over the summer and the upcoming school year. Mr. Kamar, the principal, not a principal report.
It was great getting back to the school year, welcoming our staff and students back to the building. We had a very successful opening here at the middle school. A special thanks to Rob Porus and his crew for all the behind-the-scenes work here at the middle school, our food service, transportation, all of our teachers and staff getting the building ready and their classrooms ready to receive kids. Really just a smooth opening, and thanks to everyone for all of that behind-the-scenes work. We hosted a new student orientation just before the school year started. We welcomed back our fourth graders, letting them come in and tour their classrooms and drop off materials before the school year started. The opening was busy with grade-level meetings, meeting with each of the student body grade-level teams reviewing our processes and procedures, safety information, our codes of conduct. We're very thrilled with our new school police officer model of two police officers at each building. It has been going fantastic, and certainly today, Patriot Day, as a day of honor and remembrance and service. It was wonderful to have so many of our first responders across the community turn out for today's ceremony. We'll be hosting our back-to-school night on Wednesday this week at 6:00 p.m. We have our picture day at the middle school on the 18th. And heading into October, before we see you next, we'll have our early release drill on October 6. And believe it or not, progress, of course, will be coming out. The first five-week report will go home on October 13. Again, it's been a really smooth opening, and we're thrilled to have our kids back on campus, and we're looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamar. We do have two presentations this evening. The first is a capital projects update from Assistant Superintendent Anne LaRoe and Director of Facilities, Rob Porus. And after they do their presentation, Mr. Kamar will come up as the athletic director and do... No, I'm sorry, will come up as middle school principal and do an academic and attendance eligibility update. Assistant Superintendent LaRoe.
Thank you for inviting us to speak this evening. Mr. Porus and I would like to speak on the summer projects and the development of the 2022 District-wide Capital Improvement Plan. This summer, the Smartbond Security Lock and Door Hardware Project got underway, along with the district's security camera upgrade, the middle school roof replacement of two sections, and the middle school water system pumps and panel replacement. The cost today for the Smartbond project, which was paid at a general fund and the Smartbond grant, is $744,066. Of that, $636,406 was paid from the funding from the grant, and the district paid another Rob will talk about this project, what it encompassed.
This summer, all wooden doors on classrooms and offices were replaced with steel doors. Classroom doors are now equipped with both dead bolts and card access. Very few brass keys are issued to anyone now.
We also made a significant upgrade to the district's security cameras at a cost of $323,000, and Rob can speak of the benefits of this upgrade.
101 high-resolution cameras were installed throughout the district. With an additional multi-head cameras that we installed, there are now 167 views. Advanced analytic software makes the system faster and much easier to use.
Some of our new police officers that came to us from other districts this year said, "Wow, this is amazing. Can every district get this?" And I said, "Well, that's what they pay for."
This is a review of the 2016 Capital Project Authorization. It included the 2017, the district refurbished the middle school field, the gym floor, and added cool Laker colors and logo, and installed a new scoreboard. In 2020, the district installed hands-free bathroom devices and a middle school sentiment and water softener system. Also in 2020, we had the district-wide security vestibule and main office renovation project. Lastly, highlighted this summer at the middle school, two sections of the roof and the domestic water control panel and pumps were replaced. And Rob can speak about those two projects more specifically.
This summer, two of the six roofs were replaced. The old built-up roofs were removed and all the way down to the steel deck. Vapor barrier thicker installation were installed to increase the school's energy efficiency. Lastly, a rubber roof was installed, an EPDM rubber roof. The roofs are very similar to a pole liner. We've had great success with this style of roof at the elementary school. The old water distribution required a pressurized tank and air compressor to push water through the building. The system also had two 10-horsepower transfer pumps that had a tendency to short cycle. The system was replaced with three pumps with variable frequency drives that ramp up and down gradually based on the demand for water in the building.
Ms. LaRoe, can you please just talk briefly about the last $36,000? What happens when that was not spent out of the 2016?
After the completion of the roof and the water control panel, that $36,000 would go back to unbalance. We do have a recommendation to put that money towards another project, the middle school window, and we'll discuss that later in this meeting.
Thank you.
Currently in development, we have the 2022 Capital Project. This is primarily an infrastructure project. We've had many meetings throughout the winter and the spring with CPL, the district's new architecture and engineering firm, to discuss the aspects of this project. The costs of materials and inflation have produced significant increases in the cost over the past year. We met with CPL and the Facilities Committee in August to discuss the project and the associated costs. The upcoming slides represent the plans developed as a result of this discussion. With initial cost savings, discussions were made. We do expect the cost to change over time as we move to the final plan and the ultimate bidding process. At the middle school, we have prioritized the infrastructure project. We have also, in many cases, reduced or limited the scope of the project. For example, the full roof replacement, we are just completing two sections. Remodeling the student bathrooms, vinyl floors throughout the district, renovating the locker rooms, refurbishing the athletic fields, the tech office renovation, replace the underground water tanks, upgrade the south wing elevator, install pipe installation, and we added, replaced two boilers. And we can see that from last year to this year, there was actually a $554,000 increase due to construction costs and other related incidental items. 400 of that is due to the boiler, for a total increase of $954,000. And Rob can speak in detail about each component.
This picture shows data collected from an infrared scan of the middle school roofs. In the picture, areas in red indicate high levels of moisture. As you can see in the picture, there are many areas of the roof that are still in good condition. There are two options for our roofs, roof restoration and roof replacement. In roof restoration, any wet insulation is removed and replaced, then liquid rubber material is applied to the roof. This creates a seamless surface and is much less labor-intensive than tearing off an entire roof and replacing it. This comes with a 20-year warranty. In areas where the insulation is saturated over a large portion of the roof, a full replacement is necessary. This involves removing all roof materials down to the deck and replacing a new vapor barrier, new insulation, and finally, an EPDM rubber roof over the whole thing. This brings it up to the new STP standards. Roofs 3 and 5 will replace this summer. Roofs 2 and 6 would be a full replacement, tear down to the deck, replace everything. Roof 4 is a candidate for restoration, and roof 1 is in excellent condition and doesn't require any work at this time. This would save the district a significant amount of money. The student bathrooms in the north wing were built in 1973. The newer bathrooms in the south wing were built in 1985. We're looking to do a refresh on the bathrooms by installing seamless epoxy floors, hard ceilings, and floor-to-ceiling bathroom stalls, new lighting, and painting the walls with some sort of graphic, not necessarily the one in the picture. The vinyl floors in the classrooms and hallways are worn out and starting to buckle. On the second floor of the north wing, by design, the slap doesn't extend all the way to the perimeter walls. As you can see in the picture in the lower left-hand corner, approximately three inches from the wall, there's really no support for that tile, and the tile cracks along the edge. We would like to replace the classroom and common areas with a rubber floor tile. Rubber tile is very durable and has excellent acoustic properties. We will continue to use VCT vinyl tile, like what we have on the floor here, in hallways.
So using a combination of different tiles was a way at the Facilities Committee that we discussed to try and save some money. But the more expensive tile in the places where we really need it, and the less expensive tile in the areas where we could do that. So some of the difference in pricing is a reflection of the decisions made, such as the changes in the bathroom plans, the difference in the tiling plans. If we went with what was originally planned, the difference in cost would have been astronomically higher than even what it was that Assistant Superintendent LaRoe presented a few minutes ago.
The locker rooms were built in 1973. There's large shower areas in both locker rooms that are used for equipment storage. We are proposing refreshing the locker rooms by installing drop ceilings, new lighting, replacing trough sinks with a standard bathroom sink, replacing the flooring and painting the walls. The lockers are in excellent condition and would be reused. In the girls' locker room, in addition to installing the drop ceiling, new lighting, replacing the trough sink, and replacing the flooring and painting, we are also proposing to build a single-use gender-neutral shower room that can be accessed directly through the gym.
So state code for middle schools require that we have at least one shower in the building, and that is the reason why we have one as part of this drive.
Is that for safety? So get the count on them in the science class or something?
No, because there are eyewashes and things within a science classroom. I believe it stems from when students changed and showered after a PE class. The code has said that we have to have at least one. They had the gang showers. A lot of districts have moved away from the gang showers and gone to the individual. As a middle school, we don't have showers. I don't think our showers have been used since I got here. They probably haven't been used in 20, 25 years, but we still have to have one by code. So by putting in one small one, we meet the code, but then can repurpose the rest of the space so we can use it for storage, which is what we desperately need here.
The tech office was originally designed to be a serving kitchen for kindergarten. The floors are tapered to a French drain. There's a roll-up door, roll-up serving window, and there's plumbing and electrical connections for equipment that's no longer in the room. Our goal is to convert this space into a more functional work area for the IT department by leveling the floor, removing obsolete rolling doors and plumbing. The opening from the roll-up doors could potentially be converted into a trophy case. The sports fields were built in 2002. In 2017, the district moved the softball field over about eight feet to get it away from some drainage equipment. We do make regular repairs on the field. Also, in 2017, we did some field repairs over sand filter where grass wouldn't grow, so we made some changes to that. While we do perform regular preventive maintenance on the field, erosion and use makes it necessary to re-crown the field for proper drainage. The middle school water system runs on a well. Part of the system is a 20,000-gallon concrete chlorine contact tank. This tank is underground and was installed in 1973. The new code requires that when we replace the tank, it can no longer be buried. The engineers are determining what size tank would meet the new code requirements and where it should be placed. The south wing elevator was installed in 1995. The control system for the elevator is based on magnetic cube relays. This style of system is obsolete and parts are becoming difficult to get. We would like to modernize the elevator control system. The heating and cooling systems in the middle school share the same set of pipes to distribute hot and chilled water throughout the building. The pipe insulation is fiberglass with a foil covering. We propose covering the insulation with a plastic jacket to prevent humidity from condensing on the insulation during the summer months. The middle school has two Smith cast-iron sectional boilers. Both boilers and chillers share the same common set of pipes. Due to water temperature differences between heating and cooling seasons, the cast-iron sections expand and contract a significant amount. This causes leaks. We would like to replace the two cast-iron boilers with three or four high-efficiency condensing boilers. This will serve the district in several ways: energy efficiency, greater redundancy of the boilers, and the ability to withstand temperature fluctuations. Moving on to the elementary school.
This priority list included replacing the exterior library steps. This was completed last year. Removing the classroom somnets has been eliminated from the project due to the difficulty of doing that and the cost associated. The scope includes the roof, which is slated for restoration, and the chiller has been added to the list by installation before repairs are made to the roof. Also included are remodeling the bathrooms, repairs to the floor by the elevator, and improving the drainage at the third-grade exterior door. And Rob will speak more of the details of that, if you can.
The flat roof at the elementary school was replaced in 2004. It's currently an EPDM rubber roof nearing the end of its useful life, but it's still in good condition. We would like to restore the roof before a full tear becomes necessary. This would extend the life of the roof 20 years. The elementary school chiller was also installed back in 2004. The compressors have a tendency to be a little loud. We've added insulation over the compressors to decrease the noise level and also hung moving blankets to help deaden the sound. This system is reaching the end of its useful life, and we would like to replace it before restoring the roof. In the elementary school original building, there are two very old single-use bathrooms that need to be refreshed. There is also a pair of multi-use bathrooms that were last renovated in '04. They also could use to be refreshed. The refresh would include floor, wall finishes, ceiling-to-floor privacy stalls, and lighting improvements. When the elevator was installed in 2004, the platform was built from wood over seven existing stairs. When you walk over this section of floor, it sounds hollow, and the transition to the concrete portion of the floor was not very smooth. We would like to build up the structure to improve the platform and smooth over the transition from the wood decking to the concrete floor. Stormwater drains off of Allen Street into the school because the entrance is lower than street level. We would like to install approximately a seven-inch-high step to match the height of the first step in the building and to raise the door. This would prevent stormwater from getting into the school.
So the estimated total cost after inflation, and even given the reduction of the bid award to the architect and engineering firm CPL, which came almost $200,000 award to the architect and engineering firm CPL, which came almost $200,000 under budget, the project is $861,000 more than we had allocated originally. To make up this district, the district is proposing to use capital reserve funds in the amount of $1,180,000. In order to allocate these funds, the residents of Greenwood Lake must vote to approve the upcoming proposition. With an additional $1 million allocated, the facilities committee in the district can revisit decisions to determine the best use of funds as well as meet the additional identified infrastructure needs. This also will allow for the potential inflation factors between now and the '24, '25 school year when we expect these projects to get off the ground. Consequently, we're asking for the community vote on October 16, 2023, to approve the transfer of monies from the savings account to the capital fund. With the approval of this proposition, there would be no additional costs to taxpayers. Proposition reads, "Shall the Board of Education of the Greenwood Lake School District, Orange County, New York, be authorized to expend a maximum amount of $1,180,000 from the District Wide Improvements and Must-Purchased Capital Reserve Fund to pay for the additional cost for alterations and improvements to the district's school buildings project approved by the voters on May 17, 2022? And the amount of $1,180,000 shall be transferred from the Capital Reserve Fund to the Capital Fund for such purpose." Our next steps are to prioritize the project list, review the results of the ground-penetrating radar and topographical survey as they relate to the middle school underground water tank, the elementary school Elm Street entrance, middle school athletic field. We would review and select finishes as we move along and start sending a letter of intent to the State Education Department to start the paperwork process. Any questions or comments or thoughts on the board?
I would say if anybody wants to go view any of the bathrooms or the locker rooms so you guys have a better understanding of what is actually going to be getting updated, just let us know, and we'll invite you to the next facilities meeting. And you can go through and see what is going to actually be done and being upgraded for, you know, all the stuff that we're upgrading. Last time it was put in, most of it was 1973.
Do you usually leave?
Excuse me?
When do you usually leave?
Oh, Friday. But we can, I mean, for you, Dave, we'll make it.
So maybe I would be more than happy to set up a board walkthrough of the buildings and if you wanted to do that before, and we could be at the elementary school and then travel up here so you can see those things in person if you'd like. In addition, we could send more pictures or video if you prefer that as well. The locker room or at the back?
Or the facility.
Do you want that before the October meeting? October vote? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Kamar. He's going to present the, we had our first year of our academic and attendance eligibility policy last year, and he's going to do a review of that policy, how it went, and where we're headed this year. Mr. Kamar?
Great, thank you. Just a quick recap and some reminders. The summer previous, our committee work got together and revisited the academic eligibility policy, and I came to visit you, I think, at a December meeting last year, to just kind of give an update of how the progress had gone with the initial rollout of the new program. So I've given you most of that information. I'll give some quick highlights and then recap the year and then take in the questions that you have. So the key highlights for the policy include that at every five-week grading report, we review all student reports for the building, four through eight, and identify any student that is struggling academically, including students that go on academic probation if they're failing one class, and students become ineligible if they're failing two or more classes. There's also an attendance threshold, and I'll talk about a little more detail of each of those. So for academic eligibility, probation includes if you're failing one class at any five-week mark, will then be placed in the academic probation program for the next five weeks. And what that entails is Monday through Thursday, after school from 2:30 to 3 o'clock, you check in with and attend academic support with the teacher that you're struggling with or another class if that teacher's not available. When we talk about eligibility, that is for that indented bullet. Any trips that are not grade-level trips, so there's, each grade level goes on two academic trips, it doesn't include those that's their classroom for the day. This would be our benchmark trips, like a show game in Washington, DC, things like that. It's for all clubs and after-school activities, including for our seventh and eighth graders, all athletics. It's the after-school events, our dances, you know, the fall dance, winter dance, things like that. Again, students are on probation for the next five weeks, and if they don't attend the academic support, they become ineligible. So students must attend to be able to maintain their ability to attend those events. There's also an attendance component to this. New York State defines chronic absenteeism at 10% of attendance. So we measure the days in session up to that point every five weeks. So five weeks in, we have about 20 days. Each quarter is about 40 days. So at the end of a quarter, you would expect 10% to be four or five absences. And when we initially rolled this out, there was tardies became an issue and absences became an issue because there were so few days in the first quarter. So what we landed on through a review with the committee team is that three tardies would equal one absence. So that's how we account for that. I want to highlight for you that this policy only counts for unexcused absences. So if a student is sick and they come in with a note, that does not count as one of their absences for the policy. This is the year-end review snapshot. When we think across the four quarters, there were 37 students that were placed on academic probation. And of those, looking at those first three bullets there, of those 37 kids, 31 of those were one-time only. So for that quarter, they were failing one class, they went to probation, they got the academic support they needed, and they came off that list. Five students were on for two quarters, and one student was on for three quarters. For students that were ineligible, these are kids that were failing two classes or more in a quarter, and 13 of those students were ineligible. And same thing, we see that nine of those kids were able to come off after a quarter. We did require that those students also attend academic support after school. Two of those students that were ineligible were for two quarters, one for three quarters, and one student was on that list for all four quarters. For our attendance probation, 11 kids were placed on probation because of their attendance, five for a quarter, five for half of the year, and one student for three quarters. I thought I would provide that just as a snapshot to kind of show you what the numbers looked like across the year. In reflecting on what the policy did for us for the year and some things, some feedback that we heard, and some year-end reflections, there were instances where we had to consider appeals, and those families would reach out to us, our committee would meet. Things like family emergencies might have taken place requiring absences or travel outside of the state, things of that nature. We did also have rolling into this year students that were in the review process through CSE that were then identified as needing an IEP. And in an incident like that, you know, for us looking at it, that student wasn't getting the support maybe that they needed, and that could have alluded to some of the performance issues. So those kids had to clean the slate going quarter to quarter if they were identified. Staff saw improvement in student ownership and accountability of attendance and grades. A general report of an increased focus, if you recall, part of the call for this committee work was coming out of COVID, sort of a lax sometimes of students' want or desire or showing the effort in completing assignments, making up assessments. So this was also a call to like get back to normal business. And we found from our teachers that we saw that from our kids, a greater focus on completion of work and assignments, preparation for their assessments. What I feel it did for us internally is when we look across that number of, let's say, the 37 students that were on probation, think of it, you've heard us present on RTI, right? It was like embedded RTI for those kids, wraparound supports. Their counselor knew exactly what their grade was, their principal knew what their grade was. We were crafting those letters, communicating with the families. The teachers identified who the struggling kids were. They were rounding them up through the day. Everybody that saw them would remind them about their academic support after school. Their coaches and club advisors were checking in. So it was an all-hands-on-deck, all-staff wrapping around those kids. And I think a testament to that, 31 of 37 came off the list after being out at one time. So that was something that was a great positive that I saw trending the third and fourth quarter. Traditionally, kids in these policies struggle more. That third quarter is a bear. It's our longest quarter of the year. There's that stretch from winter break to Easter with no days off. It's just a really hard, rigorous time of year. So you'll see an uptick of kids on the list then. And then that end of the year, especially for our middle school grades, accounts for the cumulative finals, which is always, you know, a tough time academically for kids. Our eighth graders on positive, knew that those difficult conversations would happen as we headed into that spring season of all those amazing events we do for our eighth graders, and all of those kids were able to maintain their eligibility and attend events. With that one caveat we did put in, we saw when we felt like kids were taking their foot off the gas heading into the end of the year because of all the things that might be held over them for atomic loading, we're over with. You know, so for example, the seventh-grade athlete that fails all their classes in June or fails multiple classes in June gets a fresh start in September. We saw that as an issue that we wanted to tackle and help those students stay focused through the end of the year. So academics does carry over from the fourth quarter to the first quarter. So we actually did start the year where already 16 kids began on our radar and on probation coming to after-school supports. So the program's already begun, those kids are already in it, and it's identify them and it helps them get supports right out of the gate. So that's another positive. With all those procedures in place, we feel like we're in a good place as we begin the year. There were no major tweaks that we felt needed to happen in summer work, so the policy will roll over and continue as it was from June. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the focus on supporting students in order to try to get them to be successful as opposed to a punitive basis. I know that the students, you know, want to get out to the field and having that 2:30, 3:00 o'clock time focused on academics and some of letting them participate in the sport or the club gives them an opportunity to kind of feel the pressure but still participate in an effort to try to get back on track. And I think your new policy shows that that program has worked, but it continues to be successful this year as it was last year. So thank you.
Thank you.
One last item I just want to review before we go into the agenda is the, there's an agenda item about the middle school window replacement project and the allocation of ARP funds. As we discussed during our capital project presentation, the price for everything has increased dramatically, and our window replacement did go out to bid in August, and we had allocated $235,000. The lowest responsible bidder came in at $397,000. We wanted to make sure that we continued to press through and do this project, so we have some thoughts on how to be able to do that. And do you want to walk them through the second slide here with the allocations?
Thank you. Since the proposed plan back last year, we filed one amendment with SED in blue. This reduced the facility repairs so that we could allocate for the asbestos testing and the expediting service at SED to get the project approved, resulting in the column Current Allocation. So if we look at that column, we're proposing filing another amendment, the column in bold, realigning the classroom teacher's salary to the 23, 24 actual costs, eliminating the after-school tutoring and summer program costs, which will be absorbed by grants and the general fund, and also eliminating the facility repairs. This could increase the money available to the window replacement by $140,000. We would still be $22,204 short on the next slide. So as we spoke earlier, we have $36,000 potentially available after the roof and the water pump are complete. So we're recommending that we take the money from that to offset this piece of the project, and that would come out of unassigned fund balance.
Any questions about that or the reason for it? I just want to be very clear that all of the things that were in here are still being funded. We're just using alternate funding sources to do this. We're not eliminating any of those things. Thank you. That is my report this evening. Thank you very much.
District lays on Morwicke. Patty?
We hope everyone had a great first week of school. All of Morwicke Valley high school students, I mean, are settling into your new schedules and new school if you're a freshman. Fall sports are underway. Congratulations to all the Lakers who made their fall sports. Parents, if you aren't aware, there is an Activity Schedular app that you can download that will really be helpful when trying to, you know, decipher your students' sports schedule. If you, you can either just search for it in the App Store Activity Schedular app or go to, it's the app with the blue hat as a logo. You can also go to the Athletic homepage, and you can follow the steps there and download the app for all your students' sports schedules. Homecoming is the weekend of October 7th, and PSATs are scheduled for Saturday, October 14th. Also, as always, with the beginning of the school year, if your student is struggling with their schedule or has any problems, just reach out to their guidance counselor.
Thank you. Neil Chester?
Just to say, wishing everybody a good start this school year. Right now, the sports are in full swing, so games starting this week, non-allegations.
Thank you. Lizbeth?
Not much to read for. We have our resolution voting on October 16. I go over the resolution bullets. If the public is interested, if you've been looking at those, you can go on the Lizbeth site and type in resolution bullets, and you can look up those resolutions. And Lizbeth has.
Oxta? Went to the first meeting last Wednesday of the year. The big news coming out is that the capital project, the project that we closed, is starting to, they're opening for your rounds in the fall, and they have And they have very planned design case with input from staff of students. They're already trying to turn the trends because evidently they're well-paying and all their projects are already growing beyond what they already had. So they're going to have to plan and kind of reallocate some space for that. They've got a plan for all that, right? Which is good as it's growing. On November 1st, Representative Catarrion is going to meet with the OSHA representatives. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of stuff happening plus-ing. And I'll report back to you. Any other questions or concerns that you want to go? Is there ever that, just like, I don't know, bring that to attention there for me? Oh, and they're doing tours of campuses. And I definitely recommend it, whether you've ever done it before. It's really interesting. I went last year with the Saturday man. Doing on October 11th of the Alton Hill campus, November 20th of the Land of Southern Ocean. And they're going to do it again in a straight line. But it's definitely worth it here until you got it.
Thank you. Order committee? Nothing? I don't see Paul's down here or nothing from Paul's. Facilities, I think we just covered all of it in the presentations. Unless anybody has questions. I don't see anybody here from the PTSA. And anything? I know we just had the bed races in the Village of Greenwood Lake that you were talking about quite a bit. Unless you have something?
I do. I have two things. One, for the PTSA, they have their ice cream social this Friday evening at 6:00 at the elementary school. It's $3 for ice cream and toppings. And it is also their drive for participation for parents. So we hope to see many of you out there on the Friday evening. In terms of the Village of Greenwood Lake, I did get a note from trustee Nancy Clifford asking that I share information about the Centennial Kickoff Cocktail Party. The tickets are now available. It is October 8th from 4 to 7 p.m. at the Waterfront Park. It will have live entertainment by Lauren Davidson, food catered by Sarah Cox, and historical artifacts on display from local historian Steve Groves. If anyone is interested, I encourage you to visit the GWL Centennial Facebook page.
And then subject five is corresponds to the board. It was attached to the meeting minutes and it's a letter. If anybody wants to come up and read it. It's from Gene Pavick, the president of Orange Ulster Bosse's. And it's just letting us know that William Boss will be our liaison again for the 2023-2024 school year. I think everybody knows Mr. Boss will not let us know. And if we get him there, he has to do it first.
He said he really had to inform me.
Subject six dot one, privilege of the floor. No takers? Okay. Subjects have new business. Subject seven dot one, may I please get a motion to approve the August 2023 financials and monthly warrants as presented? Michelle, Michael? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject seven dot two, may I please get a motion to approve the district-wide safety plan as presented? Dave, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject seven dot three, motion to authorize CPL to conduct the comprehensive electric vehicles school class assessment as presented? Michelle, Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject seven dot four, may I please get a motion to award the middle school window replacement capital project number 001-0924 as presented? And that goes back to what Ann was just talking about, how we need the money. Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject seven dot five, may I please get a motion to establish the rate for special education home academic instruction as presented? Michelle, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject seven dot six, may I please get a motion to establish rates of pay for election officials of the October 16, 2023 special meeting and capital project vote as presented? Ian, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject eight, subject eight dot one, may I please get a motion to approve food service department accounting work for Scott Sullivan as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject eight dot two, may I please get a motion to appoint Victor Bigmentaro as videographer as presented? Dave, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject eight dot three, may I please get a motion to appoint Dylan Turpiziano as substitute custodian as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject eight dot four, may I please get a motion to terminate Deborah Wozeski-Olin as school bus monitor as presented? Dave, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot one, may I please get a motion to accept the recommendations for CSE and CSC as presented? Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Is everyone standing? Subject eleven dot one, may I please get a motion to adjourn to executive session? Mike, Patty? To discuss employment history of any particular persons or corporations? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. There will not be any discernment of action.
No action taken after the executive session.
The next business meeting will be held on Monday, October 16, at 6:00 p.m. in the middle school gymnasium. The capital project vote will take place from 12:00 to 8:00 at elementary school. So everybody that's watching from town, please go out and vote yes. May I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Not yet? Oh, we want an executive session. Oh, we'll turn it after. Thank you, everybody.